We have now called to order the meeting of Muskogee Municipal Authority for May ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. I'm gonna ask that we stand and join us for the invocation and the flag salute. Let us pray. Lori, thank you kindly for this day. God, you've been gracious to us. And Lord, even through this time of emergency, God, I believe in the power of your Holy Spirit to navigate us, to show us where help needs to be and how to get it. Father, I even believe that with our resolutions and everything that we're doing on this side of heaven, God, that if we speak to you on the other side, you'll make provision for us on your earth. God, I ask for your blessings and wisdom as we go through this day and other days as we try to lead these your people. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen. Let's look at the flag. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Ivory Van.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Alex Reynolds, Stephanie Morgan, Tracy McGee, Tracy Hous, Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Thank you. Item number one.
Consider approval of MMA minutes of April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two, or take other necessary action.
I hope that we've had an opportunity to consider the minutes. Do we have any corrections or motion to approve?
Move for approval. Second.
Been properly moved in second. Any further discussion on item number one? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number one passes. Item number two.
Consider approval of MMA claims for the month ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, or take other necessary action.
Ms. Swayze.
Yes, Mayor, these are standard claims for the month of April and staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Ms. Swayze. Have we all had an opportunity to review the claims? Are there any questions or do we have a motion?
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the claims. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item two passes. That adjourns that meeting. Now called to order the emergency call meeting of the Muskogee City Council for May ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Ivory Van.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Alex Reynolds, Stephanie Morgan, Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Hous.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Item number one.
Consider approval of a resolution declaring a local emergency under the Oklahoma Emergency Management Act of two thousand and three for the corporate limits of the city of Muskogee relating to the May two thousand and twenty-two flood event, or take other necessary action.
Just before I turn this item over to Ms. Swayze and staff, we want to thank the emergency management staff of the county and the city, all police, fire, EMS, and public works, and all staffs that volunteered during this past week's flooding. We are prepared to do tonight, what we're prepared to do tonight is an attempt to draw attention at the state and federal levels, as well as allow staffs the necessary tools to help people put their lives back together. We will transmit tonight's emergency declarations to our elected state and federal delegations, soliciting their support in declaring Muskogee County a disaster area. I appreciate the rules and regulations at the state and federal levels, but I am imploring to those in charge to do whatever is necessary to help people without the bureaucracy standing in their way. It's hot and humid, not a good condition for flooded buildings with families who have to live in them. So the faster state and federal assistance arrives, the better off our people will be. City crews are planning to go neighborhood by neighborhood, assisting with trash removal in flooded areas. The routine processes for hauling large items such as sofas from non-flooded areas will resume as soon as we clear trash and debris from flooded areas. This will, this week, we will be announcing hopefully further assistance from national religious organizations from around the country who are willing to help our Muskogee County families impacted by the flood. At this time, I'm going to yield the floor to Ms. Swayze.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to echo the staff's efforts the past week, especially the emergency management team and the public works team, police and fire, all our neighboring agencies as well. Mr. Evans has some more information that we've gained over the weekend and today meeting with the state, so he'll provide comments.
Mr. Evans.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. I spent the majority of the day with American Red Cross and the state of Oklahoma Emergency Management Department, going through some of the surveyed areas, some of the reports that we received from that website, damage dot ok.gov. We've been pushing that information since the flooding occurred. If you have received damage to your property, whether that be in the county or in the city limits at this point, go ahead and go to that website, damage dot ok.gov, and report that damage. I was able to pull those reports today, and there's over a hundred and twenty properties within the city limits of Muskogee that was identified as damaged. We surveyed the majority of those, a good part of those that was in the meadows, that was around in the Williams area yesterday afternoon. I've sent ninety additional addresses to the American Red Cross that will be surveyed tomorrow. People will go out physically, look at those properties, look at the damaged items, the damaged properties, and verify that and report back to us. The American Red Cross has put in a request for mobile feeding units that will be here hopefully tomorrow to feed lunch and dinner, to start traveling the most affected areas, the meadows, of some of the most, like I mentioned, the Williams Avenue and some of the harder hit areas, to start assisting those people cleaning out their homes. The Muskogee Fire Department assisted with handing out water today to those residences. It's gonna get hot. It's gonna be in the eighties this week. The last thing we want are heat-related illnesses, people having heat strokes. We talked to some property owners today where their electric boxes got flooded, so they don't have electricity currently at the moment, or their air conditioners don't work. So we need to be very careful, you know, working in the homes, cleaning out the homes, so on and so forth. We've acquired about twelve more pallets of water. I'd like to give a thanks to our local warmer manager here, local warmer or local Lowe's that have donated water to us so far. We're also acquiring some from Cherokee Nation and the surrounding communities. So I hope to get about ten more pallets of water in tomorrow to take care of our people out there that's cleaning. We're looking at this Saturday to have a mark set up that's called a multi-agency response center, where our affected flood victims can go. The Red Cross will be there, legal aid will be there, some of the nonprofit organizations will be there as resources and guides on what they can do in these times. A lot of these people, they didn't have insurance, they didn't have flood insurance, they don't know what the next steps are. So it's our job to help them. So we're gonna set that up. The plan was from this Saturday from ten to four. As soon as I have a location locked down, I will be pushing that information out. It will be here local, and like I said, as soon as we secure a location, we get everybody dialed in, contracted to come, we will push that information out, hopefully starting tomorrow. I've been in contact with some other volunteer organizations, some churches out of Tulsa that are wanting to come down Thursday. We told them to come. They were gonna come bring cleaning supplies, hand out cleaning supplies. We've got other organizations that are coming in to help clean, help muck out homes, help move stuff to the curb, or whatever else we need. So this was an assessment day to see what the needs were, what the needs for the community was. I sent out a mass notification to about a hundred and fourteen numbers earlier that went to that damage dot ok.gov. I pulled the numbers from there, the contacts, loaded it into our hyperreach system that we use to call everybody, and was querying what the need for a shelter was right now. We're not real high on the need for a shelter, but people just need some help, and that's what we're trying to get them. So please be patient with us. Like I said, we're a two-man department here, but we've got a lot of resources throughout the city that are working with it. The county we work with on a daily basis, the surrounding jurisdictions are helping us. If you have any questions or concerns, please feel free. The best way to get in contact with us is message us on Facebook, City of Muskogee Emergency Management Facebook page. Please go there, it comes straight to me or Kelly. If you call our office phones, I'm gonna be honest with you, we're probably out in the field. We're out working right now, we're out requiring, acquiring resources, acquiring water, passing it out, and doing what we can to help our community. Actually, I'm working with the, with the state and the Red Cross on a daily basis till we get this figured out. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Ms. Swayze, any other direction?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Thanks.
So, Mr., so Mayor, what will occur if this item is approved, approved, is Resolution twenty-eight ninety-nine, which is the resolution declaring a local emergency and triggering all powers under the Oklahoma Emergency Management Act of two thousand and three. Basically, what those provisions will allow is to trigger a provision within the law which allows political subdivisions such as the city to enter into contracts and incur obligations which are necessary to combat, combat the disaster, protect the public health, and provide emergency assistance to victims without the necessary, or the necessity of burdensome, overcomplicated, overcomplicated and time-consuming procedures. So those provisions are contained in the emergency declaration, a copy of which has been laid in front of you on the DS. So happy to, happy to answer any questions regarding that resolution, but I would request that the motion be to approve Resolution twenty-eight ninety-nine, declaring a local emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Our move for approval is presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Thank you so much. That will adjourn that meeting. We will now call to order the agenda for the Muskogee City Council for May ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. Just before we go into this meeting, we have a proclamation that we would like to make to the Muskogee County Port Authority for Economic Development Week. All right, Darla's got this. So this is Economic Development Week, and I think it's always important for us to highlight the fact that we are so fortunate in a city our size to have the industrial economic development boom, or surge, that we've seen in the last eighteen to twenty months. We've got nearly one point seven billion dollars right now in infrastructure investment and job enhancement in our community. We are a community of only thirty-eight thousand residents, yet our resiliency and our ability to attract this type of investment rivals larger cities across the state. And so we are so happy, even though Kimber will not come up, please stand, who you are. Kimber is our director of econo, director of our Muskogee County Port Authority, where we house our industrial development, and Darla assists with the workforce component, as well as other duties as assigned in a very capable and competent way, along with Jeff Underwood, who's also a key component of that staff. And I'm just going to say that I therefore, Marlon J. Coleman, Mayor of the City of Muskogee, do hereby recognize May ninth through thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two as Economic Development Week, and remind citizens of the importance of this community celebration, which supports expanding career opportunities and making lives better. Clapping time.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Ivory Van.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Alex Reynolds, Stephanie Morgan, Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Hous.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
We will now consider a motion to excuse council people Reynolds and Morgan.
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second on the excused absence. Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Here.
Tracy, Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, that item passes. We will now consider the approval of the minutes for city council regular session April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Hopefully, we've had an opportunity to review the minutes. Do we have any corrections or motion to approve as presented?
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the minutes for April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two pass. We will now consider the consent agenda, which consists of items one through six. Are there any items to be removed, or do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number seven.
Receive, report, and discuss the current and future needs of the Martin Luther King Junior Community Center Trust Authority, and take any necessary action.
Ms. Swayze.
Yes, I'd like to invite the Chair of the MLK Center, Leroy Walker, who has a presentation.
Good evening, everyone, Mr. Mayor and council. We taking an opportunity, a privilege to come and stand before you once again to represent the MLK Center. We want to present to you tonight, the center is doing well. It's one of the most precious jewels in the city of Muskogee, one of the most used buildings, I would say, in the city of Muskogee. Anytime anyone entered that building, they'd ah, because of what they see and how that building is functioning and is used for many different purposes. You all should have a copy before you of our profit and loss, our budget there, our projected budget. Do you see that? That sheet should look like this, okay. What we, the city, if you look across, this is a good time, we thought, to review five-year operation of the city of that building. That building's been operating now for five years, and if you look at the budget, it started out, the city was contributing thirty thousand dollars to it, then it went up to sixty-five thousand, fifty thousand, sixty-six thousand, and seventy-five thousand this past, this current year, is what the city contributed. As we look at the building, and we at that cross point now to where maintenance is very important to the building, and so we're asking the city to increase that this year another twenty-five thousand from the city to help with that. If you turn to the, this sheet here, you should have a sheet that has the Muskogee Martin Luther King Center paid events. You have that sheet. Do they have that? Okay. When you look at that, what happened is, the center operation has changed. When we first started operating the center, when the city first operated, there was a lot of people paid to use the facility, people still paid to use the facility. But I'm not gonna go through all, as you could see on that first front side of that, how and who is paying to use the facility each month and weekly whenever they wanna use it. But on the backside is what the change have really made. If you look at the backside of that sheet, in the last five years, the city government has used it quite a bit compared to what it did before, and there's a number of events that's being held in the center that's not being paid for. Also, Muskogee Public School uses it quite a bit for different events. Then you go on down, communities and civic organizations. These organizations from the city to the public school and to the community civic, these individuals, that's what the community center is for, is to be used for activities in our city that where everybody that come in don't have to pay for it. But these, this is an important facility for these activities, and these activities are very well used all the time. But I wanna go back over to the first part on the other side, I skipped that, I wanted to mention that, partnership with the Health Department. And they're in there, as well as you know that, the Health Department has been in there doing a phenomenal job with the vaccinations and that's going forward. If you look at that, that list there, you see how many different ethnic groups that they are serving, and overall, they are, they have served, the number is four thousand nine hundred and sixty-six people that have come through that center during vaccination. And, but the Health Department has been so kind, and as you all know, they pay for that use of that facility, but they, someone else will come on and talk about that a little later on. But I wanted to highlight that because that, that has been a very, in these last couple of years, very important part of our city to have a facility like that, where the Health Department and people can come from all over within the city, because that building is basically centrally located in the city here. So it's, it's served a great purpose there. And then the other groups is, is being there, but I want to highlight that one particular one because of the use that they're doing. And so now let me go back to the budget sheet, I'm skipping around on you a little bit. But at the same time, we're looking at, and we're projecting this, this year, because of COVID, if you look at the numbers of, of what, if you look at that first line item of city funds transferred into the operation, it was seventy thousand this past year, this year, and it was sixty-six thousand, fifty thousand, and go so on, if you go backwards. Then utilities, you see utility costs and all that. Bottom line is, when we look at total funds that's coming in, in, in two thousand and sixteen, it was forty-three thousand five twenty-nine. In two thousand and seventeen, it was eighty-four nine forty-seven, and then in two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, it was sixty-five thousand three ninety-five, and then it was ninety, eighty-four thousand, six forty-three. And this year is ninety-five thousand one twenty, one seventy-five. We're projecting, at least, a projection is a hundred thousand this coming year. That's our projection, that's what we're looking at. And then when you go down through the program incomes, we're looking for program incomes has, has fallen off, if you look at that. And programs income is, when it started out, it was fifty-one thousand, it was seventy-two thousand, then fifty thousand. In two thousand and nineteen and twenty, what happened? It dropped down to thirty-six thousand. Anyone wanna guess why? COVID, okay? And the building wasn't being used, and people weren't paying to use it. And then in two thousand and twenty, nineteen, well, it started coming back up, and you see where we was able to bring in nineteen thousand three sixteen. We're projecting that, that figure, that line item will go up to about forty-six thousand because more people are using the building now, they begin to come in and use it, and pay for the rental of that building. Programs, the next line item is program incomes, we're projecting, it was nineteen thousand five sixteen as well, we're projecting forty-six thousand as well on that, in the programs. And we have a donation of four thousand, someone donated to the facility to operate. So we're looking at that hundred and fifty thousand dollars is what we're looking at, hundred and fifty thousand dollars for those different events income coming in. But the bottom line is, we're here to make an appeal to you all to put more money in the budget from the city, at least twenty-five thousand dollars. And, and as you looked at this sheet, where we talked about the different events, a key factor in any building is maintenance. I look at this building as maintenance, maintenance, maintenance. And the building is gonna be going up with the maintenance as we look at, another sheet you should have, in there, it talks about some things that we're looking at within, so this sheet here, y'all see this sheet, this has Derek Reed, that top, I haven't printed it all for me, community room needs, you look at tables, chairs, video, spotlights, I'm not gonna read all that, but those are the things that need to be replaced after five years of operation, things were out, and the tables and chairs were out, and that's what you get into, whiteboards, janitor service. Let me say something about the janitor service, and this is just me, this is just me. Janitor is one of the most important persons in that building. I mean, really, your janitor is the one that keep that building clean and looking well. A lot of people don't put emphasis on the maintenance of a janitor service, and those individuals, they're in and out, many operations come through them, and you have to clean in between and make it look good. So I just wanna just put that in y'all mindset, to think about, make sure when there's a request for maintenance people in that facility, a lot of emphasis need to go on that. You know, I'm a pastor of a church, and I know what it's like to maintain a facility. It just don't happen. You have to paint, you have to clean floors, you have to change carpet, it's a lot of things go into it, and our, we wanna see that facility continue doing well and be a diamond in the community at all times. Anytime anyone walk in that building, we want them to say, ah, what a nice facility. You know, and that's, and it's gonna take maintenance, and so, and there's other listings on there that, you know, we talked about freezers, we talked about the lavatories, there's a number of things on that that's listed that is needed going forward, we're seeing that need to be going. So here's the bottom line, and I'll, I'll take in a question you might ask. Bottom line is, we need to keep putting money, and I'm gonna encourage the city to keep putting money toward that facility. And if you keep doing that, this facility will always shine as a diamond in, in this community. So I'm gonna strongly encourage you, we asking for another twenty-five thousand in capital, that's capital money, for different things. And talking with, you know, Kim and the different ones, I talked about, we talked about, the sprinkler system is out, part of the sprinkler system is out, that's been out for a while. You know, curb appeal has a great effect. That sprinkler system, we think should be put in there. So is it our, is it our responsibility to come out of our budget, or is it the city's responsibility to come out the city's budget and maintain? Then you have mowing service. So all of that is highly important, and that's what the trust that we there for, we hope that you appreciate us trying to do all we can to make this operation run smooth, and then when we come to you, we hope to hear when we have a need for the trust authorities. We know it's the city fundings, and, and you all are one that controls it to the degree, that's what you all are for, but at the same time, we want to be able to push you to always put money into that facility. And, you know, parking lots are looking good, I know you have an update on the parking lot behind there, that's added, looking good. All that is part of the, the beauty of that operation, so. Any questions, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Chairman Walker. Ms. Swayze, I'm just gonna make a motion that we adopt the presentation as presented, and that we increase their budget this year by twenty-five thousand.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions for Chairman Walker or Ms. Swayze?
I had a question, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, you said the sprinkler system is...
Yeah, from what I was just told here recently, that part of the sprinkler system is out, and...
Is that if the building catch a fire, it won't...
No, 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 excuse me.
With spring?
Let me, let me back up.
The water, okay.
The grass, the yard.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for that clarification.
No, 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 not the sprinkler system in the building. If the sprinkler system in the building, if I know, that was, we would've been able to turn the spinning on our head to get you to change that.
Okay.
We're talking about yard.
The yard, okay, thank you.
Yes, well.
Thank you. Further discussion?
I do have one more piece of presentation. We had another piece to go.
Go right ahead.
Mr. Mayor, before you do that, can I ask?
Yes, sir, Mr. Van.
I was just curious, down there at the King Center, I watched, like, the lawn crew, like, those corners on those buildings, I don't know if you noticed them, whose responsibility is, when that crew hit, when that crew hits those, that building, whose responsibility is that to fix that building?
I'll explain that that was addressed, and that was recognized, at the point when it was recognized that, at some point, the building had been damaged, we don't know at what point, so we don't know if the current contractor was the one that, 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 you know, hit the building with the riding lawn mowers, or if it was, you know, years ago when the city was responsible. So, you know, we never have really addressed, you know, whose fault it was, or, you know, tried to go back and, and chase down and, and try to bind our current contractor with the damages for, for that. Just giving an explanation, you know, we did notice at some point, someone cut in the yard, did kinda scrape the portions of the building.
Is it going to be fixed though?
That would be, I mean, I think those kind of expenses would be something that the city would have to consider.
Just a minute of work order.
Okay. I'll turn it over back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Van. Ms.?
I will not be long.
Let me give an introduction to where we're going here. As Red Walker did an excellent job. And I don't want to be the one to brag, but every counselor should feel the way I feel. I'm so proud of the Muskogee Martin Luther King Center, what Muskogee Martin Luther King Center has produced in the last six years. I see Kim back there smiling. In the beginning, in the beginning, when we ventured out, you know, to present a Martin Luther King Center to the community, we're there. And, you know, the best is yet to come. And that's where we're at right now, our partnership with the health department, you know. And all that we do right now, the bottom line is, is to try to save lives. And the health department has been there faithfully every Thursday since March of 21, trying to save lives. And so now we're going to expand to an opportunity once again, just to reach out. Our health is our wealth. That's the most important thing that we can have is our health. I'm sure Dr. Who's agree with me on that. So with that, I wanted to introduce Ms. Walker, who's going to talk about some of the upgrades that are coming our way at the Martin Luther King Center also.
So some of the, well, for those that don't know me, I'm Dolby Walker, Community Engagement and Health Planning Manager for District Seven, which includes the county of Muskogee. And born and raised here. Some of the things that came from COVID were bad, but one of the awesome things that came from COVID was that we were able to partner with you all, be at the center of the county by being at the Martin Luther King Center. And we've seen some people walk up to get vaccinated and we've seen some very affluent drive up regularly to get serviced. So from that, we talked about, okay, we're back, we're getting back to norm. What is the next step? Chronic disease screenings. So on the second and the fourth Thursday of every month, we will offer, along with your COVID vaccine, we'll offer chronic disease screenings. With this being the first week for us to do it, we will have our mobile unit parked out there, but we'll be inside. Y'all know Muskogee heat goes 80 to 100 real quick. So our recommendation was for them to be inside and not in the mobile unit. So they will be inside. We'll continue doing our setup that we've been doing. We will start out doing, billing some insurance until we can figure out financially how to take care of the non-insured. We will have some screenings for non-insured, but your cholesterol, things like that, we will do bill insurance in the beginning. As I'm trying to pull money forward and work with Ms. Tina, we'll figure it out for the non-insure to get served. We're also wanting to move a fatherhood initiative class on every Tuesday at 6:00 PM there. We believe fathers will feel comfortable coming there. And like I said, it's central to the whole county. So you'll see that every Tuesday, we'll start it promotion for it to be there next week. 6:00 PM. It's an evidence-based curriculum to encourage, assist with co-parenting, help get life skills. And I've taught it myself. So we are going to move that there as well. In the fall, I will do a leadership summit. I'm in partnership right now, working with the state on building it. But I'm putting quite a bit of money into building leaders to address health equity and also how to handle diversity as a leader. So you'll see that being there and it will serve. It will be the center for four to five counties will come in for that as well. Any questions?
Ms. Reed?
I'm good.
You're good? Questions from the council? Thank you, Ms. Walker. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Further discussion?
Mayor, before you vote, just a cup, one thing really. The motion that was to increase the budget. So that would need to be subject to the budget process. There are formal requirements, including public hearings, that have to be adopted, have to be held before a budget can be adopted. So with your motion, it needs to be subject to the formal budget process.
Or a budget amendment.
You can't do that either. You're going to have, that was not on the agenda.
Oh, it wasn't on the agenda.
So, yeah. So what you're effectively doing is mandating that the manager, with your motion, mandating that the manager amend the draft budget that has been prepared to include that. And that will be subject to the council's adoption following the public hearing, which will occur next month.
For next fiscal year.
Yeah. Because that's what you're talking about is for next fiscal year.
Motion is amended.
Second is amended.
Any further discussion?
Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Upstaying.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. The item passes. Item number eight.
Consider approval of Council Policy 1-11, providing a category of actual unnecessary expenses deemed approved in advance for city council members and procedures for presentation and reimbursement of claim or take other necessary action.
Mr. Tucker.
Mayor, members of the council, at one of our recent retreats, the council expressed an interest in seeing a policy which would outline the amount of reasonable and necessary expenses which the council may claim as part of their duties. So the charter provides that council members, while they receive no salary, are entitled to receive reimbursement for actual quote and necessary expenses when authorized in advance by the council, end quote. And so what this policy intends to do is to create that structure for you all to authorize in advance certain actual necessary expenses. What has been proposed are four categories of expenses which would meet that criteria, and that is internet installation, services and equipment, telephone installation, services and equipment, cellular telephone, services and equipment, and mileage at the federally approved deduction rate to and from city hall, city council meetings, and any travel and furtherance of the performance of the duties as council members. And so basically, all those four categories are necessary for you all to do your job effectively as council members. And so while, you know, some folks may not have any expenses related to telephone because many people use their cellphone as the sole source of communication rather than landlines anymore, since this is a policy that will apply in perpetuity unless the council changes it, we wanted to include telephonic means, just in case someone comes on the council and does use their landline for council work. And so those categories that are approved in advance can be submitted by council members by filling out the sworn claim form, which is attached as Exhibit A. And so the, that would need to be submitted as well as any backup documentation for a reimbursement. And so what would happen once that's done, that is moved to the city manager's level to review and make sure all the documentation is attached and then move it through the treasurer's office for payment. You all will approve it as just a garden variety claim that comes through the purchasing committee. And then you'll be reimbursed for those actual expenses. The second part of the policy allows for other claims for actual necessary expenses. And these are categories of claims that you may incur and further ensure their duties, but which are not necessarily routine. And so for those types of expenses, there would need to be advanced approval from the body to approve any particular claim before it is incurred. And then if that is approved, then the council member seeking to get reimbursement for that expense is authorized then to incur it and seek reimbursement for it using the same claim form. And so what this process is intended to do is to provide a mechanism that has been in place since one of our charter revisions that has never actually been utilized before. And with the cost of gasoline and telephones going up and the drain and requirements and accessibility that you all are facing, this seemed like the appropriate time to bring that up because we're all just about 24/7 available. And so you shouldn't have to, and the charter anticipates you not having to bear those expenses solely on your own. So with that, happy to answer any questions, but I do believe this looks very similar to what was discussed at our last retreat.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Any questions for Mr. Tucker? Do we have a motion to reflect the will of the body?
Move for approval.
We have a motion?
And one point of clarification, Mayor, this policy was, will be retroactive. It'll be effective March 1, because that was the date when we first started really discussing this thoroughly. So just in case there were any folks who had any claims that they were saving in anticipation of this policy, then those will be covered within that. So we have a March 1 effective date that we're proposing.
Was the motion by Ms. McGee?
Yes.
We have a second.
Second.
And I think, Ms. Van, you had a question?
Yes, ma'am. Can I ask?
Yes, sir.
Also, Roy, like on gas, like I know myself, when somebody calls me, I always go to their house and look at what's going on. And when they get, the city gets through with their job, always go back and see if it's been properly taken care of. So another thing is, like when it's raining and stuff, like before and still now, I'm just curious, because I brought this up, you know, before about the rain gear, raincoats, boots, you know, because sometimes you can get out there and do it yourself and get them going, you know, those grates. So some of the constituents, they don't, they don't want to get out there and do that. I wonder my award, I try to tell them, the city can't come down all the time and just to clean the grate because they got so many of them. And I was just wondering, is raincoats and boots and stuff included in this?
No, it is not in one of the pre-approved categories. It can be a pre-approved expense under the second section that I referred to, which requires advanced council approval. And so as part of your adoption in the budget process, if you want to approve some expenses for equipment, you're certainly welcome to do that, but that is not covered, that is not automatically approved in this policy. It would require a separate action of the council to approve those.
But can be done?
Absolutely.
Because I know I keep it in my truck. I keep a, you know, a vest, like, you know, when you get out in this dark and stuff. You know, I had to buy that myself. But I'm just saying.
Any of those expenses that are not identified in those four can be approved at any time by the council. Just they have to be pre-approved before you incur the expense. So if you determine that you need, you need rainboats, boots, or that the council need, well, sometimes rainboats too. If you need those, then, you know, we just need to either handle that as part of the budget process, so it's incorporated in there, or we at any point can put it on the agenda for separate action.
So that's what we need to do, put it on the agenda, separate action now?
For the budget.
For the budget.
Okay. And we can take that as direction.
Okay.
I do have one question, Roy. Is there a dollar cap amount that we would put for claim for councils?
There is not one that is included in the policy, but that would be, of course, subject to the amount of money that you will allocate to this expense when you adopt your budget or which has already been included as council expenses for the current fiscal year. And of course, I can't speak to how much money was in that account.
Thank you.
Because on the $75 we get on the phones, it needs to be more than that, wouldn't it? Than $75?
Well, this would replace, this would replace that. So whatever your, whatever the cost of your phone and monthly expense is, would be, would replace this. So you wouldn't get the $75 anymore. You'd get your actual expenses.
Oh, okay.
So you'd bring in your phone, or not bring in your phone bill, but attach that with the claim, just the amount that you're billed to ensure that it's your line and not seven other lines that you're covering for other people that are not so related. Because I know a lot of people do have, you know, multiple lines for their family members and whatnot. So this is specific to just the council member in order to support the work that they do on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Turn it over back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. The item passes. We had one citizen wish to speak who just walked out the room.
I don't.
We read it for familiarity. Oh, they gone. Item number nine.
Consider an executive session to discuss and take possible action on the following. A pursuant to Section 307b2 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the International Association of Firefighters, Local Number 57, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. B pursuant to Section 307b4 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the workers' compensation claim of Kenneth Woodworth, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. C pursuant to Section 307c11 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to confer on matters pertaining to an economic development project, including the development of a proposal to entice a business and the possible transfer of real property in the northwest quadrant of the city, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session.
Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go into executive session. Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, we will now convene into executive session. All parties not subject to the session, please excuse yourself at this time. We now reconvene now from executive session. Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Ivory Van.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Hmm.
Tracy Who's.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Mr. Tucker.
Item 9A pursuant to Section 307b2 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, the council did convene an executive session to discuss ongoing negotiations with the International Association of Firefighters, Local Number 57. After being briefed on the status of those negotiation and a proposed offer on behalf of the city, I think an appropriate motion would be to authorize the offer to be made on behalf of the city and furtherance of those negotiations as discussed in the executive session.
Do we have a motion to that effect?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Mr. Tucker.
9A pursuant to Section 307b4 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, the city council did convene an executive session to discuss the workers' compensation claim of Kenneth Woodworth. After being briefed on the status of that claim, I think an appropriate motion would be to approve authorizing the city attorney to settle the claim of Kenneth Woodwork for the amount discussed in executive session.
Do we have a motion to that effect on item B?
Move for approval.
Second.
Has been properly moved to second. Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Mr. Tucker.
Item 9C pursuant to Section 307c11 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, the council did convene an executive session to discuss matters pertaining to economic development, including a proposal to entice a business and the possible transfer of real property within the northwest quadrant of the city. After being briefed on the status of that proposal, staff was given direction. However, no action is necessary, no further action is necessary at this time. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. That was our final item. We are adjourned. We are adjourned.